On Thursday, January 14th, 2021, notice of this meeting was mailed to the press and the current of Ed Harbor Township. Notice was also delivered that day to the Ed Harbor Township Clerk and posted on the bulletin board in Township Hall. Advertised instructions for this hybrid meeting were posted on our website and on social media on Friday, February 12th, 2021.
Thank you. May we have roll call, please?
Ms. Alabarda?
Here.
Mrs. Berg?
Here.
Mr. Delabarka?
Here.
Mr. Ireland?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Mr. Price is here.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Here.
Mrs. Solagi?
Here.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Castellano?
Here.
Okay, we're going to stand for the flag salute. After we salute the flag, I'm going to ask everyone to remain standing for a moment of silence for Joe Rizvoto, our bus driver who passed, and our former educator, Ivan Supin. Thank you all for coming. Welcome. This is our February work session meeting. We've already had a full meeting in February. We had our first budget meeting last week, and it's time for us to begin working on our budget. So we've already had a full meeting. This is our work meeting. Next week will be our business meeting for the month of February. And we talked about, also last meeting, the beginning of our full-day preschool program, our universal preschool program, as well as our full-day kindergarten program. We've now come full circle in providing our early childhood education program to the residents. This helps our students. It helps our parents. It helps our families. It helps our community. We obviously have ongoing our Road Back to School plan, and that remains priority number one in everything that we do. It's a living document and an ongoing process. We also received new CDC guidance this past week, which we are analyzing. And I also wanted to give just a quick update. We had some conversations.
Dr. Hiri, if you can please mute. Thank you.
Okay. Just finally, that we have been working actively to have district teachers and staff vaccinated and have them vaccinated on staff. We've had ongoing communications with our policymakers, and over this past week, I had conversations with both Senator Brown's office and the Office of Assemblyman Mazzio and Armando. All three are in support of these efforts and are looking to work with us and try to make that happen. So that's just a quick overview of where we are. We see things are getting slowly better, and we see better times ahead. With that, I'm going to turn the floor over to our superintendent, Dr. Gruccio, for her superintendent's report and update.
Thank you, Mr. Castellano. As I usually begin, I give a COVID-19 update for our district, and currently, right now, we have 27 staff and students who tested positive. That was within the last 14 days. As of today, staff in quarantine are 25, and students in quarantine, 117. Regarding Road Back to School COVID-19 update and some process that has been made in the district based on research and feedback that we've had preliminary, what is health and safety, regarding health and safety, there's been a memo that's sent out to staff and students. Like gators are no longer accepted in the district as a PPE device, so we've hired masks. As Mr. Castellano spoke, or when he spoke, he shared about vaccinations, and as you know, that the board passed a resolution regarding the hope that state officials would realize that vaccinations are very important, particularly for educators, so that educators could get me to either the top of the list, front of the line, and have consideration of the importance of vaccination for educators. I also shared last week that I wrote letters to dignitaries from our local mayor to the governor of New Jersey. So far, the feedback that I received was from the executive director of the Superintendent's Association, who told me that he received my letter. I was in full support and was going to share the contents of that letter with the commissioner of health in New Jersey. Staff update. Our staff is slated to return and join county colleagues to return to the buildings on five days a week beginning March 1st. Also, policy change that we spoke about last week regarding the pivot from virtual to in-person instruction, where our policy reads that that would occur through a process but at the end of the marking period. So we've changed that to the end of the month, so students can pivot back to in-person instruction at the end of the month. Also, an update with our pandemic response team meetings. They have concluded as of this Friday, so the information that was gleaned in those meetings will be shared at the district response team, a pandemic response team meeting, which will be occurring at the end of this week. And what I expect is feedback from the school meetings, and, you know, a lot of that's going to be categorized into options, if you will. So return to school five days, so go virtual five days, stay with the current hybrid model, revise the current hybrid model. Also, at that meeting, we will talk about information that we received through our research regarding variants and the transmission of the disease, the prevention, which we've talked about that, COVID-19 in schools, cases in family school, mitigation, classroom spaces. Okay, so we already have our administration looking at classroom spaces regarding social distancing of six feet. So what I anticipate are all these areas being discussed, and then from there, that we would return to the stakeholders in Ed Harbor Township, probably through the way of a survey, to see which options best suit the needs of our stakeholders, and then take the research from there and move forward. So we do have a plan. We are making strides in terms of changes that meet the needs of our students, and where we can, when we can. We will listen, continue to follow the Road Back to School guidance and the executive order of Governor Murphy that he has in place. Okay, so that is my update in terms of where we are. And after that, I think we have some presentations, but I'll let you take it from here.
Thank you, Dr. Gruccio. Yes, we continue to work very diligently on our Road Back plan. I think at this point in the presentations, our next speaker will be our auditor.
Thank you, Mr. Castellano. I'd like to introduce Mr. Michael Garcia with Ford Scott and Associates during the audit exit for the 1920 school year.
Thank you very much. We are here to present results of the audit for the 1920 school year. As we discuss every year, the state and the federal government impose many rules and regulations on school districts. The first part of the audit is to determine whether the district is in compliance with those rules and regulations. Whenever we find areas of error or exception, we're required to submit a finding and recommendation to the board for corrective action. I have good news to report tonight. There are no findings and recommendations, so it's a clean audit. Once again, obviously, that is a credit to Shandra and her entire office, and the district as a whole, to have a clean audit year after year. The second phase of the audit is obviously to look at the financial statements. And for tonight, the area of the financial statements that I like to present to the public and to the board that I think are the most important to be aware of, considering that we have limited amount of time, the entire report itself is over 150 pages, but I do want to draw the board's attention, the public's attention, to the ending surplus at the end of the year for the district. The district ended the year with a total of $17,232,541 in surplus. That surplus is restricted by the state into certain areas, and I'm going to go through those areas of how it's broken down. First, whenever we have surplus in excess of 2%, more than 2% of the budget, the state requires that that money gets set aside, and that money is utilized to fund a subsequent year's budget. In this case, at June 30th of 2020, the district had excess surplus of $5,596,864. That money is sitting in the bank now and will be used, must be used, to fund your next budget, which will be the 2122 school year budget. The $5,596 would be funding that. Additionally, the district still has excess surplus from the prior year, prior year being '18, '19, in the amount of exactly $3 million. That money is now being used to fund this year's budget, the 2021 school year. So that's additional excess surplus that's being used to fund the budget. Additionally, we have a capital reserve. The capital reserve funds can only be used for capital items in the district. That reserve is $2,437,219. There is also a maintenance reserve in the amount of $392,000, as the title of that reserve suggests. It can only be used for the maintenance and repairs of your buildings and facilities. The district has a newly created emergency reserve in the amount of $1 million. That money is set aside for, as the title would suggest, emergency conditions that might arise. We also have a reserve for year-end encumbrances in the amount of $1,374,219. That money was set aside at June 30th to pay bills that related to the 1920 school year. It's normal operating procedure that not every vendor gets their paperwork in by June 30th in order to be paid, so the money is set aside and then subsequently dispersed to the vendor. Once the documentation is provided and approved by the board, that money is then dispersed to the applicable vendors. Finally, that leaves us with our unassigned fund balance. This is the 2% number, the maximum number that the district is allowed to carry over into the next year. That 2% number is $3,432,239. All of those components that I just discussed, once again, add up to the total surplus at June 30th, 2020, of $17,232,541. The audit was gone over in depth also with the board previous to this meeting. This is the summarized version. The full report will be available on the district's website. It probably already is there. If there are any comments or questions that you have for me, I would be delighted to answer.
I'm just going to start out and thank Ms. Anaya, our excellent business office, and compliment the district for having a perfect, clean audit. That says a lot, and we appreciate those efforts. And I'll see if any other board members have any questions or comments. Okay, seeing none, and we thank you very much for your work with us.
Thank you all. Good night.
Thank you.
Next, as part of our continuing budget process, we're going to hear a presentation from our supervisor of athletics.
Mr. Santilli, we found last week to stand by the podium. It's the best microphone for the public, if you can. Thank you.
Keep it very close.
Thank you very much, Dr. Gruccio, Mr. Castellano. Thank you very much for having me here tonight. Once again, my name is Michael Pellegrino. I'm the Director of Athletics and Activities for the school district. I'm going to tell you a little bit what's going on this year, what we did last year, and hopefully where we're going in the future. This year, 2021, in the fall, we had 491 student athletes participate. Compared to last year, we had 476. During the winter rate now, we have 220 student athletes participating, whereas last year we had 352. There's a little note there for this winter. Because of COVID and the NJSAAA, we have moved seasons to accommodate indoor practices and games. So swimming was pushed back, wrestling and volleyball was moved out of their typical seasons, which are normally fall, and moved into winter. So the numbers may seem different, but as far as the overall numbers, we're trying to keep along the same amount for the students that are actively participating this year in athletics. Spring, we're just starting to get the physicals in at this time, but our usual count for spring athletics is around 550 student athletes at the high school. With the high school, along with activities, we have 38 high school activities that we run on a normal year. This year, once again, due to COVID and I'd say pre-pandemic, most of our competitions are not going off this year with regards to Science League, which we have four clubs in, and our academic challenges. They're not being offered due to COVID because they're in-person competitions. But we carry 40 activity advisors. Last year, we had over 1,100 participants with our activities at the high school, and this year, we have 650. But once again, due to COVID, we were only able to do indoor weightlifting at this time due to the restrictions, as well as the other competitions that were face-to-face. So it is expected, at least right now, for it to be down, but we'll hopefully be back to where we were next year. Middle school athletics, we offer 11 sports at each school, 12 coaches at each school. We normally run about 100 events and have about 700 student athletes per school that participate. But once again, I'd say due to the pandemic, middle school sports right now are not being run due to the amount of schools that are participating in the K-12. So we're, once again, hopefully going to get, see that turnaround and make moves to get back to that. What we did last year, so as you can see, we had a lot of things that we accomplished last year. Last year was our first year for girls volleyball at the high school, varsity and junior varsity. We had the flock continuing. We brought in a national recruiter, Positive Coaching Alliance for the coaches. You know, we launched our social media campaign last year with the help of Mr. Santilli. I learned how to use Instagram and Twitter. I was not a big Instagrammer or Twitter prior to that, so if you follow us along, you'll see almost every day we're trying to post everything that's happening, whether it's a senior spotlight, results of games, or captioning something that happens at the games during the day. If you see that I'm saying that we're hosting a game that day and you don't see a result, I don't like to post our losses. So you might deduce that if I didn't post the end score, we probably lost that one. But right now, we're doing really well. Boys' basketball is 5-1, girls' basketball is 500, our bowling team is 3-0. They're the three teams that are actually in competition right now. The next seasons don't start until... Swimming today was the first day for swimming, and track starts this weekend. So along with that, last year, we had 37 first teamers from the Cape Atlantic League, and that was only two out of three seasons. If you remember, we closed down in the spring due to COVID. We had five All-South Jersey student athletes, three were named All-State. We had National Recognition for Girls and Women in Sports Day. Our finalists last year, we were in the South Jersey finals for swimming, boys' basketball, girls' tennis, and boys' soccer last year. And we were named sectional champions in indoor track, and we also had a press player of the year in swimming. We had two meet of champion champions last year, as well as three state champions were named for indoor track. So it was quite a year last year for us. In terms of programs and proposals, this year, we kicked off esports, so we actually have an esports program that is running at the high school. My supervisor's in the room somewhere, but I won't say where he is right now. And it's going very well. So esports has become a big part, you know, as you know, it's becoming a big part of gaming in today's society. So we have the club officially started this year. With the number of student athletes we've had participating this year and in the past, we've made a proposal for an athletic trainer, a second athletic trainer, to assist in the safety of our student athletes. This year, we also kick off boys' volleyball, varsity and junior varsity, and we have a freshman, have a freshman girls' volleyball team starting March 1st. So we continue to collect data for our unified sports program that is to another program that includes our special needs students along with regular ed students competing against other schools. So we're trying to get that off the ground. This was a very difficult year for that with most schools in getting that off the ground and running, obviously, you know, due to COVID. The other things that we're doing this year is the creation of patient for the protocols of site supervisor, event staff, and athletic quarters. You know, everything changed this year with temperature taking and actual contact tracing that has to occur at every single one of our events. So we had to have protocols placed for that to take off for this year. Next year, we're going to investigate the possibility of a co-op for ice hockey with Mainland Regional, and the only reason we're able to do that now is because the NJSAA has removed the group four, which is the largest schools, and group threes from that. In the past, you weren't allowed to do a co-op if you were group one and group two, so we were unable to do co-ops. But now the NJSAA has removed that stipulation and has allowed bigger schools to do co-ops, which is a great thing for, you know, our students that play ice hockey. We're going to look at a proposal for girls' bowling and girls' golf as separate entity teams for competition. Right now, they do compete as one team at the varsity level, but we're looking at possibly expanding that to take care of our female student athletes in both bowling and golf. And then, once again, the proposal for actually starting unified sports. In terms of academics and professional development, we joined with the Positive Coaching Alliance last year, and we're continuing along that path. The Positive Coaching Alliance is basically an organization, a national organization, which is helping basically build the trust, build the community, the camaraderie, all through positive coaching with our coaches. We're still involved with the National Federation of High School Sports. They're online courses. We do the NCAA presentations to our coaches for the changes in rules and regulations for Division One, Division Two, and Division Three student athletes. And then, we are also looking at going with the National Coach Certification Courses, which are free and online, to offer our courses to the coaches, so that way they can become certified, much like we do in education when you go back. These are continuing ed cases, classes for coaches. Also started last year and continuing this year with the data collection for athletics and activities, where we're tracking the students that are involved in athletics and activities, and what their progress is, how are they doing behaviorally and how they're doing academically, to see if there's anything that we can do to assist them and help them move on, to help them whether it's going to college or if it's any type of contract that needs to be developed to help our student athletes. 2022, 2122, next year in our rotation, we bring in Atlanta Care for our presentation of health for our student athletes, developing basically plans for health and fitness with our student athletes that are participating at the high school and the middle schools, expanding our student athlete leadership team. The leadership team is basically the group of student athletes that are the captains and the leaders of each team, and trying to teach them, and you'll see that in a future slide, what we're actually trying to do to expand that team. The coaches can be given a credit and certified in their program and obviously continue our data collection with our student athletes. So continuing our district goals, as you know, we have three district goals, improvement, student achievement. So we hit a bump in the road, obviously, this year with COVID in getting our book study off the ground. Not being able to meet face-to-face with the students and with the amount of time that they're spending on the screen, we kind of pushed our leadership manual and the championship culture to start when we can actually get things going with all of our student athletes. So next year, the plan is is not just to start with the freshmen, but to disperse through all of our levels at the high school. Again, continue the data collection and the Positive Coaching Alliance. Once again, life skills, character development. Climate, culture, you know, in the past, and hopefully again in the future, we will return to Pride Day. We'll be able to continue our volunteering at the food banks and the walks and the Field of Dreams and all the things that our student athletes participate in every single year. They do a lot of community events. So hopefully, we get the fans back next year, where we can continue to give out the T-shirts, the towels and the gears, and the whiteout with the flock. You know, each year, we recognize our varsity scholars in a ceremony at the end of the year, and then also recognize our student athletes of the month, every single month. How we're going to expand or continue expanding community partnerships, once again volunteering and working at the events. We offer camps and clinics almost every year. Obviously, with COVID right now, it's a plan that has to be in place to see if we're going to be able to do that on our sites. We offer soccer, basketball, track. Our coaches volunteer their time and bring in basically student athletes from the community to build the camaraderie within the community. So we're going from there, basically. We've live streaming, this is brand new this year. With the inability to bring in fans up until last Friday, we started live streaming all of the events. All the links can be found right on our webpage. That is just, it's a great avenue. We're without two fans right now. We have protocols in place. Basically, it's parent or guardian that are allowed for the teams that are participating. Varsity and JV, bring them in, get to see your son or daughter participate in the events. But we're going to continue with the live streaming because there are still so many people that are supporting our programs that cannot attend. And then, the protocols, basically creating that protocol, how we're going to check the parents in, how we're going to, today, temperature take for everyone, background check for everyone, basically the questionnaire, like you did when you came in the door tonight, and then also spacing them out and seating them six feet socially distanced up in the pool area today. I know it was a lot. I know I was under a time constraint. I wanted to, yeah. So thank you very much. I know I ran through a lot of things there. Everything's in the slides. And once again, thank you very much for having me tonight.
Thank you very much for an excellent job and a great presentation, and also keeping things going the best we could under very, very difficult circumstances. That's what we're all doing. So I'm going to see the board members. I see Mrs. Sullivan first.
I really love the live stream because I'm a grandparent, and now I get to see the kids play. So it's been really great. We asked you in one week to have it done, so I really commend you on that.
I will take no credit. It is Michael Sweeter. It is Leanna Mullin. It is, they're a fantastic team. I had the opportunity to work with them, but you know, I don't know the front end or the back end of the camera, so they have been tremendous in assisting me with that.
That's great.
They've done a fantastic job.
Now, I do have one question I'd like you to expand a little bit because I know the public's going to want to know. I already know that we're not having the middle school sports because there's really no competition, correct?
So at this time, I'm...
Mr. Pellegrino, if you can use your microphone for those at home. I appreciate it.
Gotcha. So at this time, we surveyed the Cape Atlantic League K-12 districts last week, and at this time, we only have two schools that are interested in participating in middle school sports. One of the two schools, which is another K-12 district, is only looking to do intramurals. So unless it changes, and unless more schools are going to be actively involved to participate, most of the schools in the league right now are holding off to see where we're going with the pandemic. So it is really due to the lack of schools that are looking to participate.
Patrick?
Thank you. So I love absolutely everything that you guys do on social media because we don't get to see everything. We can't go to the games or anything, so that's great that you guys are doing that, and our IT department's doing it as well. I just have two questions for you. You said we allow two parents to the games. Is there any plan to open it up for like college recruiters? Because we're not taping anything and people are not getting their tapes out for colleges or anything. Is it open? Are you guys thinking about that for the college recruiters? And then after you speak on that, I'll just have one more question.
Okay. So right now, we're following the guidelines of the NJSIAA and Governor Murphy, which has stated that it's only two participants at this time. That can be parents and/or guardians that are allowed into the games. All of our programs right now do currently video their own games through their booster club, and those events, basketball, basketball, and not bowling, but basketball, basketball, and swim, they tape their own events. Swim, not as much, only because it's a timing event, but both of our basketball programs are currently taping and uploading to Huddle at this time. So those videos are able to be utilized by the teams to send to the coaches. So those videos are able to be utilized by the teams to send to the coaches.
Okay, thank you. So you, just my last question, Mr. Castellano, I just have, for the middle school, you said that there's not enough competition out there. Is there enough competition to play each other within the school district? So say we have one school that wants to play another school that's within our EHT district. Is that open for discussion or have you guys thought about that? So that we can play our, even though it's EHT versus EHT, is that open? That is all.
I will do whatever my boss is telling me to do. So yes, it's always open for discussion. You know, it's just a matter of what we're able to do, getting the students back onto campus and in a safe manner, participating in spring sports. So if that is something that you're, you know, we need to put the protocols in place, we'll figure out a plan. But I'm not opposed to it. I mean, I was ecstatic to see the parents coming back in, you know. Once again, as a parent of two former student athletes in high school, they missed an entire spring season, so I understand. So we'll do whatever we need to do, provided we can follow the protocols properly and do it safely.
Very good. Mrs. Byrd.
Thank you. I really liked the piece that you shared with the data collection on tracking our student athletes to make sure that, you know, if they're having some issues, we can work it out because athletics and activities are so important for our students and it can really be the difference between graduating and not graduating, keeping them where they need to be. So that's wonderful. I agree with Mr. Ireland that despite other districts wanting to compete, any normalcy that we can bring back to our students' lives via sports or activities, I think we should do whatever we can. They're all struggling and if we can get them more active and out of their homes, we should try to do that, in my opinion. My question is, when you talked about the co-op hockey, I love how you're working with other districts in the area. Most of those kids probably play on travel teams together, so it just builds that rapport. My question is, will that be open to our female athletes?
Hockey is not male or female. Hockey is same as football. If a female chooses to play ice hockey, she can participate in ice hockey. I don't know that we have the numbers to do a separate female team completely. Maybe that's something to build up to. But once again, this is just a, you know, exploratory right now to do the co-op because it comes down to the two districts working together with a budget as well because you split that budget between the two schools. So it's just really exploratory for, to see if it's something that we're capable of doing with mainland regional.
Great. So in the recruitment process, will our female athletes be equally recruited for this program as our male athletes?
Always.
Great. That's my question.
There we go.
Anyone, Mrs. Gubner Ford?
Just like a comment kind of question, but thank you for the presentation. It was great.
Thank you.
One of the things that you presented on, I want to say it was last year because everything's kind of running together. But you talked about the book club briefly. And you, so your plans for the book club, did you say it was virtual this year or you had to kind of?
No, we put on hold this year. With the amount of work that the students were doing online with the fall and the big transition, we just thought it was in the best interest right now to hold off on. Because we were going to start with the freshman class. Coach O'Neill was starting with freshman football. But it was just, it was a very difficult transition to the start with COVID this year. So we decided, after talking to the coaches, that we were going to hold off and then redo it, basically get ready to attack it for next year.
Okay, I just wanted to say that when you gave a presentation on that program, I want to say it was last year or the year before, it was, I think it's an amazing program. And I think it speaks to the needs of the athletes and students, you know, with the social emotional learning. Just is a mentorship program, it sounds like to me, through almost, pretty much a book club.
That's correct.
And I think it's great. And I just want to make sure that we definitely see that take, you know, we don't want, I don't want that to go away. I want that to thrive when it's appropriate for the students. So thank you for that program.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you again, Mr. Pellegrino. Excellent job. I appreciate everything that you're doing and your staff, our coaches, our advisors to keep our students as active as we possibly can. So we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
We are going to move now into our finance and operations area and we're going to hear our committee report, please.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to give you the report from February 1st. In attendance was myself, Ms. Salagi, Mr. Castellano, Ms. Anaya, Dr. Brucio and Mr. Beck. We spoke about different things that were already discussed at the last meeting that you'll be familiar with, such as food service. A food loss presentation was discussed with Mr. Beck here in public. Transportation coordinator was out, Michelle, and she discussed it and answered a lot of questions for us. Facilities, the update with the facilities department is the vestibule punch list is completed with the exception of the security film around some of the perimeters. That's the windows, the insides, the security film. So that's being addressed. Alarms at the high school needs one more day of work, then we can go live. Wire pools were already started at the slate ball primary. ASPs, footings, concrete cores are complete. Waiting on township to inspect when the weather improves. Maintenance building cameras and access controls for facilities, building orders and installation to be in within two weeks. Concrete work at Davenport Miller scheduled, but because of the poor weather, it's going to be scheduled for the first week of the spring break. Fernwood elevator, due to parts arrival, will be starting in the spring and working on door replacement specs for Davenport. Fernwood and high school meeting with architect Thursday to discuss referendum process and timeline. That's something that was discussed as well during the committee. Business office audit meeting with Dr. Brucio on February 1st and the board presentation meeting tonight, which we all heard. Action items tonight, the audit for 2019 and 2020. And action items on February 23rd. We'll discuss out-of-district travel, 6421 gifts and grants and donations in the prom contract. Other items discussed, schools' own signs. Sandra emailed the township administrator. He will have the police patrolmen confirm where required signage would be and report back. And those are the signs that say weapon-free, drug-free school zones that would be like a thousand feet out from, around the school buildings. So that's something that the police department is checking into. So that concludes my report. I'm sure Ms. Anaya would have something to add on to these items and we'll see what she would like to add.
Thank you, Mr. Price. So what I would add is we have, again, we give the board the agenda the Friday before this meeting. They have the weekend to review the board and ask any questions for clarity if we can discuss it at this meeting. And in the finance and operations world, questions that came up specifically had to do with, we're looking at updating a policy for our bus drivers and runs and restructuring how we do onboarding. So one of the questions that came up is now that we have switched bus drivers from runs to hours, how many hours are required to work for health benefits? Up until last year, we were with state health benefits plan, which was 25 hours of work entitled due to benefit package of dental health and prescription. In order to not harm our current staff, those who were already working five runs a day slash five hours a day, is a 25-hour work week still entitled to health benefits? So that answered that question. Additionally, with that same policy, there was a question that came up after about on the policy is diversion for the board to review is an update. Well, I won't steal a thunder policy committee. I do want to talk about one finance item. There's updates on the language for the drivers with onboarding and the contractual obligation they'll have once we put the money up front for two years, as well as the starting salary going up, the per hour rate. While we were in there, it was a recommendation of administration to clean up longevity. Longevity had, I can probably pull it up, had very odd numbers. Longevity is usually at $500 or $250 increments based on the amount of time worked in the district. This particular, I'll get the policy up. This particular policy had drivers here is, had very odd numbers. And I'll give you an example once I get it up. So an example of longevity was $301, $617. And I'm sure there's history of those amounts and how somebody came up with that. But just going consistent with the rest of the district, having either clean numbers, 250, 1,500, those types of increments for longevity, we are recommending to clean that up while we're in that policy as well. So let's discuss that. Another question that came up in the finance and ops area is on the bills list, we are paying cream of land for milk. And it was brought to our attention, we are now serving gallons of milk versus the small containers. We were serving five days a week for breakfast and lunch, and that's 10 milk containers. When we went to seven days a week, instead of having 14 containers counted out and prepackaged, we found we can use, and a gallon is what other districts have done. And we've talked to our compliance people at Department of Agriculture and it's actually a little bit more milk than what they're entitled to. And it is 20 cents more per family. But efficiency-wise of not having to count 14 smaller containers, we went that route. So that was another question that came up. I think that concludes my figure.
Any questions or comments, board members? And I would just like to add, one of the things we've discussed and an ongoing theme is making sure that we are putting enough resources into our capital needs, both in the short and the long term. We have many, many needs in this district. We've highlighted them. We've seen them presented to us relating to the age of our buildings, our HVAC, that's heat and air conditioning, roofs, windows, sidewalks, driveways, parking lots. There is a lot to maintain. And, you know, we kind of always need to reemphasize that, you know, no learning can take place if the roof leaks or the heat doesn't work. So that's something we always have to keep in mind and especially as we move into budget season.
If I can piggyback off of that, Mr. Castellano, just because I'm not sure how much the auditor spent on the excess surplus. Everybody has known and people have called my office specifically to say you were closed so much of last year or even this year. Where's my money? I want my tax refund, you know, for their property taxes. It's nothing to laugh about, but it is a constant question I get. When Mr. Garcia explains the amounts that have to be put towards future budgets, that's what he was explaining. Like last year, we didn't spend about $5.6 million. I can book them up. About $5.6 million was not spent, meaning we budgeted. We raised enough funding for it, but because of the closures, we didn't spend it all. That has to be put towards the 2122 budget, which you will see during our budget presentations forthcoming. So I want to just highlight that. Of that $5.6 million also emphasizes look for things that are what they call non-recurring costs when you're trying to spend. You don't want to spend it on salaries, you want to spend it on capital. Things that can, it's not going to be there next year because we'll be open in theory. So I just want to highlight that as well. Thank you.
Excellent, yep. And very, very good use for those funds. Mrs. Byrd.
Thank you. I have a question on the longevity payments for the policy that you were just speaking of. We are increasing our rate. And we are reimbursing for fees that go along with, you know, CDL fees, things like that. And now we are reducing the amount of years it takes to get the first longevity payment from eight years to five years, it looks like. So my question is, are other departments in the district, do they receive these same longevity payments in these same increments?
So it varies by department, but actually the five year is not new. It's actually on the right, or very last line of the previous page. So kind of maybe cut off on your printout. That, the timing isn't new, it's just the dollar amounts. But it is up for discussion if the board wants to remain the same because we are putting money elsewhere, that's fine too. It was just to kind of clean up, to make them a little bit more round numbers. But we can leave it the same if you would like. But the five-year start is actually, it already exists. We just changed the number from 301 to 500. And that's for staying with us in our same district. So you may have 15 years of experience driving, but staying in the district for 15 years as a driver, you get $1,500 on top of your base salary. So it's just rewarding those to stay put, if you will. But again, it's been there. The amounts are up just a smidge, but I understand, we would definitely understand if the board didn't want to move them up in that regard.
So I just wanted to get an understanding of if our other departments, like our paraprofessionals, do they have the same kind of step guide for longevity? Also, our food service workers, do they have this kind of incentive programs? Because we are raising the hourly rate and we are also reimbursing for fees. So those are two awesome incentives to, you know, have our bus drivers come in and stay with us. So I'm just wondering, I just want to make sure our other employees also have this kind of benefit.
I'm going to pull up the EHTA bargaining unit, just as an example, and I'll give you some of those. But I'm going to take a second just to pull that up.
Thank you.
Just while you're doing that, remember we had discussed last week in the budget context, our dire need to staff up, to have enough drivers and aides as well because we're down. And so for us to be able to slowly get back to normal operations, we need to attract and retain drivers.
I respectfully understand that. And I recall all of that in our discussions last week. My concern is making sure that we are being equitable across the board and because all of our employees offer us a service that is unique to their department. And although we need bus drivers, and I could never be a bus driver, so thank you to all the bus drivers who do it every day. I just want to make sure that it's equitable across the board.
Sure.
So that was my question. It's not saying anyone doesn't deserve it or anything like that. It's just making sure that in rewarding one group, we are making sure that we are recognizing the skills and talents of the other groups, how they contribute to our district.
Mrs. Sullivan.
I do believe we have incentives to stay for all of our, most all our employees. Some are done through the teachers' unions. The pairs, I believe, are done through the, our food service. And who else would be left? I believe everybody has an incentive to, you know, have longevity here.
So I have some information, just as examples. We have powers and secretaries 12 years, cafeteria six years, facilities 10 years and mechanics five years. So at some point, they all get the longevity and that's negotiated on those. Those are specifically in the EHTA agreement. Teachers are 20 years and 25 years. But they are existing. So it looks as though transportation is in line more with mechanics being the five-year start as far as when they first hit their first one versus the other ones are a little longer. So it is existing for other staff and even non-union groups have it as well. That was just some examples. So it's up to you guys, how you want to handle it.
Can you just repeat those slower, please?
I'm sorry. Secretaries and paraprofessionals 12 years. Cafeteria six years. Facilities groups 10 years. And mechanics, mechanic helpers, five years. Teachers, 20 is when they first hit theirs.
And for those groups besides the bus drivers, they're all collectively bargained for those?
I just pulled up the EHT agreement just as an example. Those are all in the EHTA bargaining group, correct? And the transportation drivers are non-union. They are not in this group, correct?
Okay, any other board members, questions, comments on finance and operations? We do have to take action tonight on transfers for ratification 5.2. So may I have a motion for that, please?
Mr. Castellano would actually be the audit report item 5.2. It may be, oh, not sure what happened there.
Send me.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Alibarda? Yes. Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarga?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Mr. Price, yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
Thank you.
We're now going to move to curriculum, and I'll ask for our curriculum committee report, please.
On February 2nd, the curriculum committee met. In attendance was me, Mr. Delabarga, Ms. Tamika Gilbert Floyd, Ms. Kristy Byrd, Mr. Santilli, Dr. Gruccio, Ms. Hannigan, and Ms. Moss. We held our meeting virtually through Google Meet, beginning at 5:00 PM. Professional development for staff, which is all virtual right now, that will need board approval, was identified and shared with the committee, while there was no anticipated field trips requiring approval at this time due to COVID-19. Two contracts for staff professional development were also shared. The first was the National Alliance for Mental Illness, NAMI, contract was shared as a reminder, as it received Board of, Board of Education approval in January. While a new contract for living, yes, was shared that will require approval this month, and will provide professional development for staff focused on staff self-care. Other updates for the committee focus on athletics, technology, and community partnerships. At the current time, the athletics department, in conjunction with EHTV, has partnered to livestream all indoor varsity sports, and will tentatively plan for summer camps that will need approval in the coming months. The technology update focused on a variety of topics that can be seen on the ITS monthly report, but the highlight was that during the busiest time of the day, the district is only using half of their bandwidth. Other community partnerships regarding the NJCAP and Atlantic Prevention Resources strengthening families programs were discussed that positively impact students, staff, and parents. A curriculum and instructional resource spreadsheet was shared with the committee members, focused on grades K to twelve in the areas of ELA, math, science, and social studies. In addition, the 2020, 2021 textbook list was also shared with the members, and will be updated at the end of the year to reflect the 2021, 2022 school year. Ms. Hannigan, supervisor of social studies, shared a proposed new resource to support social studies at the elementary level in grades K to three. This new resource has been added to the preliminary budget as a way to support teachers in grades K to three by adhering to the new social study standards. The resource is from Nistrom, and is called Young Citizens. Questions that arose with this resource stem from the length of the lessons to data to support its effectiveness. Since this is a resource to support the curriculum and teaching and learning, data is not available. However, testimonials from other districts that have implemented the resource have been provided to the committee. The chapter lessons are meant to be delivered weekly with approximately thirty minutes of instruction, but that varies depending on length of the lesson and use of extension activities built into each lesson, as well as having a deeply rooted literacy element to allow for integration in ELA. Ultimately, through curriculum writing, a pacing guide will be developed to support the implementation of such a resource to support teachers while meeting the needs of the social study standards at grades K to three. Ms. Moss, supervisor of ELA, discusses science of art and art of literacy, and where we stand in regards to the ELA workshop model. The conversation and questions focused on district philosophy and reading research that is delivered through the workshop model, evidence-based interventions, and where we stand regarding building capacity amongst our staff and the ongoing commitment to sustain professional development around the complex process of teaching, reading. Discussion environment, a deeper dive into how materials and resources and professional development support reading research and implementation of core instruction will continue. And that is my report.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments in the curriculum area? Questions or comments on curriculum? Mrs. Byrd.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank Ms. Moss because she really provided a thorough presentation. Literacy is a passion of mine, so I had a lot of questions, and so you know, that's a lot of questions. So I asked and asked and asked, and had a lot of stuff to, you know, and she showed me everything, and showed us everything, so I was very grateful for that because she took her own time to do that. So I'm hopeful that in addition to the program that she showed us and everything that we can really get our teachers, more professional development so that they feel stronger to implement the foundational reading skills in the K through two levels, so that we can really give our students every opportunity to be awesome readers and literate and excel. So, thank you, Ms. Moss.
Very good. Anyone else? Mrs. Sullivan.
I was able to preview the elementary social studies programs, and it was really great, I liked it. I would also like the opportunity to see the rest of the district's social study curriculum, the new curriculum, so if I could request that.
Okay, well, I'll have Doc get in touch with you on that. Anyone else on curriculum? Mr. Santelli.
I just want to provide a couple of updates. One, I was just going to also reiterate that what Ms. Byrd and, and Ms. Sullivan had mentioned. First and foremost, we did provide an additional update, and there was four board members that had participated in that. Of course, if there's any other information that anybody desires, feel free to reach out, and Ms. Sullivan will certainly make that a possibility for you to, to obtain that curriculum. There was also a couple of questions that came in. One question was in regards to the grading policy, if there's going to be considerations during the pandemic due to hybrid learning in addition to that, and part of that would be student progress being shared, and also the number of students passing or failing K to five, middle school and high school, and also a question in regards to zeros or missing assignments. All of that information is being gathered right now as we speak. We just came to the conclusion of the end of the second marking period for the secondary level, so we are gathering that information as part of our normal practice, not just during COVID times, but, but, you know, typically all the time. So that information will be shared with the board, and of course, in terms of, for instance, zeros, right now, zeros are typically meant to be a placeholder in a gradebook with the intent, of course, to receive that work and then update the gradebook, but that's also going to be part of that feedback, feedback that we gather in taking a look at any changes for grading policy and regulations for consideration at this time. In addition to that, there was, the only other update that would fall within curriculum would be in regards to middle school sports. We did hear a conversation about that tonight, and I think some great suggestions and ideas proposed by the board, so we'll certainly circle back and have conversation around those as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Santilli. Okay. Mrs. Gilbert Floyd.
I just wanted to say that I'm definitely with Mrs. Sullivan, what she mentioned about the new social studies program. I'm very excited for the K to three learners. When I did get an opportunity to look through the, the book that was brought to one of our board meetings, I was just really glad to be able to see so much cultural diversity within the book, far as representation of different students, whether the students may have had a disability, different nationalities represented in, within the curriculum, so children can look in the book and see someone that may look like them. So I think that's very important, and I think that's a great start, especially for our K to three learners, learning citizenship and tolerance, and I think that we're off to a good start with that particular program. So I'm looking forward to see how that pans out and spreads through, of course, you know, up to, through the high school.
Very good, thank you. So now I'm going to ask Dr. Charlton if he has anything for public session on personnel?
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, all nine members of the board are members of the Personnel Committee, and one of the questions that came up this week that did not fall under the umbrella of confidential information was the use of salaries in job postings for job vacancies. And we discussed the idea of using ranges first, you know, but that does create some confusion amongst applicants where there could be a very wide range, say for a teacher, for example, the range of salaries from a beginning year teacher to a top of the guide teacher can be very significant and create some confusion. So what we finally settled on was the idea of using the starting salary, the beginning salary, to give applicants a little bit clearer picture of what they're looking at, so they can use their time effectively in terms of making applications and making a more effective process on the district's end as well.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now we're going to move into policy, and I'll ask for our policy committee report.
Okay, thank you. On Tuesday, February 2nd, 2021, the policy committee met, and that included Mr. Santilli, Dr. Herry, Ms. Amy Elko, her colleague Elizabeth White, President Castellano, Vice President Gilbert Floyd, Patrick Ireland, and myself. We discussed lots of policies, some new, some existing. The first policy that we went over was policy 0167, public participation in board meetings. This policy remains the same as it always is with the addition of one sentence, which is the board does not accept anonymous comments. We're requesting, as we have previously, that when you have something to share, that you use your name, so we can have it on the record. That's the only change to that, that policy. The next policy that we spoke of was, Dr. Gruccio referenced it in her report, it's 1648.02, remote learning options for families. Just a slight procedural change, rather than if you want to request transitioning from all virtual into a hybrid instruction, you can do so at a monthly increment rather than a quarterly one. So you just will, fourteen, within fourteen days of the request change, you just email your building principal and request that change. So that's a monthly basis rather than a quarterly one. Okay, this is a new policy, and it will require two readings. It's 0163.1, and it is electronic participation in board meetings. So in order to assist board members during COVID, the Board of Education will permit board members to participate in the board meeting through the use of speakerphone, teleconference, or video conference, or by other comparable technology means. The board must submit a written request to the board president indicating the date of the board meeting and the reason for the anticipated absence at least three days in advance of the meeting, except in the case of emergencies. There must be a physical form of board members present at the board meeting in order for members to participate electronically. The members participating electronically will be considered present, but will not count toward a quorum. Additionally, no more than four board members may participate electronically during one meeting. So that is a new policy for us to consider. The next policy is 0169, board member use of internet, social networks, and other forums, electronic communication. So in an effort to prevent violation of any board members' freedom of speech and use of social media platforms, policy 0169 combines guidance from both Strauss Espay and New Jersey School Boards Association on the use of social media. The use of Facebook and other social media by school board members shall be consistent with the New Jersey Code of Ethics for school board members. Board members will refrain from inappropriate conduct in making public statements, including but not limited to posts and comments on Facebook and social networking sites, and will refrain from any disparagement of fellow board members or others on a personal, social, racial, or religious basis. Board members shall not send messages that contain material that may be defined by a reasonable person as profane or obscene, messages that are racist, sexist, or promote illicit, illegal, or unethical activity. Board members will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education and will make no personal promises on social media sites, nor take any private action which may compromise the board. So there's also different stipulations. I am not going to read all ten, but board members, if you have any questions, please let me know. This is new, it will require two readings. Okay, this is another policy, we, that is also a new policy and will require two readings. It's 7231, property policy crowdfunding. The purpose of this policy is to effectively regulate and establish parameters for use of crowdfunding campaigns, such as Donors Choose for district purposes on behalf of the district, or for the purpose of supplementing district programs. Employees and eligible organizations wishing to utilize crowdfunding for district purposes or programs or prior to obtain written permission for doing so by submitting a pre-approval request form, consistent with the requirements of this policy to building and administration. Written permission must be received before proceeding with any crowdfunding efforts. It shall be the responsibility of the building administration as applicable to approve all crowdfunding requests. So teachers can, upon getting permission from their building principal, can utilize crowdfunding sources like Donors Choose to supplement classroom materials. So that is a new policy, it will require two readings. And we discussed the bus policy in detail during the finance committee report, so I don't think we need to go over 441, 4411. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Anything, Shandra, you, you want to chime in, or have we covered it?
I was, I will circle back to policy committee. I was, the crowdfunding is not what I read originally, but I will circle back outside this forum. That's all, thank you.
All right. Any questions then, or comments from board members? Mrs. Sullivan.
This is not going to be popular, but I totally disagree with having a policy for board members on social network. I don't have a, a board member page on any of these medias. I think it restricts everybody's freedom of speech. We have a, a, we already have a policy on our ethics, which probably, if you had just read the first sentence of your policy, then we will follow the ethics policy that's put out by the NJSPA, that would have been fine. We already have an ethics policy, I do not think we need another policy, and I really do not, not agree with anybody, anything holding back. I have never made a comment on social media, and if anyone has any evidence that I have or any other board member has, I'd like to see that. This has been going on for three years now, that comments have been made, and I'd like to see evidence of this, that we need this policy, and I reject the whole thing.
Okay. Other board, I saw Mrs. Alabarda.
I just wanted to comment that I'm really happy to see the policy on the crowdfunding as, in my school district, I do use Donors Choose, and I have been able to do some great things that can't be funded by the school, that have been funded because of Donors Choose, and it's, you know, the property does become property of the school district, but it is for the children, and I think this policy is amazing.
Thank you. Any other board members?
Mr. Castellano?
Yes, Mr. Ireland. Oh, Mr. Delabarga, then we'll go to Mr. Ireland. We're going to, we're going to go out to the West Coast for Mr. Delabarga.
I just want to clarify the policy on participation of board members. Does that cover the current situation we're in, such as pandemics? Is it covered in the wording there?
Yes.
All right, just want to make sure, thanks.
And moving forward as well, this policy will go past, at, the time will come when we will no longer be able to have a hybrid meeting in terms of public participation as the emergency executive orders expire, but this policy will continue on as long as there is a quorum in person, board members with good cause may participate remotely.
I just want to thank the policy committee for considering this policy and having it presented to the board. Thank you.
Mr. Ireland.
So I just wanted to say, I, I love the, the policy for electronic participation in board meetings, one, because I propose that, two, it also gives other members that want to be board members the option, if you want to become board members, to participate if you have jobs, and sometimes you can't make it, or, or anything, and you can make it electronic compared to being physically in person, I think that opens up- I think that opens up possibilities for people. Two, I believe for our administration and for our board members, if we're sick, we still have the obligation to still vote on some of our policies and our budget. So this gives the opportunity for every member to participate fairly and give the option for them to stay at their house. So thank you for the policy board for bringing that up. I appreciate that, thank you.
Anyone else? Mrs. Byrne.
Thank you. The policy that we proposed for board member use of internet and social networks, I think that as leaders in the district, we have to hold ourselves to a higher standard when we are, I'm so sorry. As leaders in the district, we hold ourselves, we have to hold ourselves to a higher standard when it comes to how we interact in public or in a public forum, just like we expect the employees of our district to hold themselves to a higher level of behavior. I think that by setting an example, having a policy in place that also shows that we also hold ourselves to that high level is important. And if you have never had an instance where someone has questioned maybe something that you've written or misinterpreted something, that is great. You are doing exactly what you should be doing on social media. This is just to reinforce that we are leaders and that we too take what we do seriously, whether we're at a meeting or whether we're on social media, and that we do everything we can to support our district and represent it in the best light we can. So that's how I perceive this policy, not necessarily being restrictive of my rights, it's more me doing whatever I can to support the district in a public forum.
Anyone else on policy? Mrs. Sullivan.
Again, we have our ethics code policy, and I think that when you accept a position by this, when you take your oath of office, it shows that we are setting a standard, and I don't see any further standard that needs to be set.
Okay, anyone else on policy? All right, at this point, we're into our communications. We already talked on the calendar, and I'll just ask Mr. Del Barca if he has anything, the latest and greatest from New Jersey school boards.
Our Atlantic County School Board Association meeting is scheduled for this Thursday, the 18th, at seven o'clock. I think you all have been invited and hopefully you've registered. You can still do that tomorrow at school boards, and that meeting will be again Thursday night at seven o'clock. There will be, this year we are going to have the eighth grade dialogue. It's going to be a little bit different. I'm going to be recording with the eighth graders, I think it's early in March, March 3rd, something like that, and then it's going to be available to board members on our website, so it'll be something that's a little unique this year. That's where eighth grade representatives are interviewed, and they are planning to do that again this year in a new format. And I believe there's going to be a county meeting in March on St. Patrick's Day, and I'll get back to you all when we meet again about details of that. That meeting may just be the local president of Atlantic County to discuss and do some thinking regarding what's going on in the state and in our county, but we haven't decided that yet or determined that yet. And there will be a final meeting on May 11th for the school year, and that will be, again, a virtual meeting. We are going to have virtual meetings right through the end of the year and then, so thank you, that's our schedule. I'll keep reminding you at every meeting. Thanks for giving me the opportunity. Pete?
Very good, thank you, Lou. Look forward to that St. Patrick's Day. Okay, at this point, we're going to go to public comment, and we're going to start with folks in person first, and then we'll go to the folks on the phone, and then we'll go to email. So we're going to ask for you to come forward and give your name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Keep in mind that the board cannot discuss personnel or litigation, and it may very well be that you will have a complex question and a member of our administration will have to get back to you. When we go to the phones, we're going to ask that people please ask their question or make their comments upfront, and then hang up and you will answer. We have a hand sanitizer here for the, for our podium if we need it. Steve, you may have discovered, but there's a spare one here, we want to make sure we provide that, so, members of the public, do we have some paper towels?
We got it covered, Mr. Castellano.
Are we all good?
We'll be wiping down in between.
Okay, I just want to make sure, we want to, you know, very good, so, members of the public.
Good evening, Susan Fisher Brown. Can you hear me? Good evening, Susan Fisher Brown, you know my address too? 316, 316 Island Lane. Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Susan Fisher Brown, and I'm a mother of two awesome EHT students, Cassidy, who's a freshman, and my son Mason, who is a senior. I also have three other children who have already graduated from EHT, so I am fully vested in this, in being here this evening. Tonight I am here as a very concerned parent and a nurse practitioner who has been working amongst COVID since it's veered, since it has veered its ugly head. Knowing this, you can appreciate that I am here with an educated opinion based on fact and experience. Our community is ready for our children to once again get back into school five full days a week. Like many, I have watched my children struggle through this part-time school schedule, which has for the most part had them teaching themselves while insidiously losing empowerment and engagement in a system they so desperately need to fuel, to feel connected to. Sitting in front of a computer hours every single day, sometimes till 11 o'clock at night, has led to depression, disconnect, isolation, and a decline in their grades. It is time for us to wake up and deal with this issue without turning away and ignoring the facts. I am unsure why there is so much fear amongst the teaching community or the VOE, because neither of you have any greater danger than anyone else in this community. Importantly, I have been working as a hospitalist since the onset of this crazy COVID infection. If you aren't sure what a hospitalist does, I'm a provider, I do admissions in the hospital, I deal with every patient on night shift, and I have been face-to-face with COVID multiple times a shift, and still, I've been tested five times, I'm negative, I have no antibodies, consequently indicating that I have done ample job protecting myself from this infection. Now I'm sure you all have been out food shopping, eating out, maybe even visiting with friends and family, hopefully donning your mask. This, along with respectfully maintaining social distance, is the recommendation of the CDC for us to follow in order for us to protect ourselves. We are a society of constant change and adaptation. Consequently, we are always updating our behavior according to facts on recommendations based on science, not fear. It is for these reasons that we, all of us, should be making this decision, and not just you, the VOE, or the teachers union. Our children's mental health and well-being are on the chopping block, and it is time that we stop sacrificing them. Other schools have been doing this for months, and yes, schools our size, they have been successful. What are we teaching our children when you show them that all you do is run away from adversity because you fear it? Instead of running away from this virus based on fear, we should be getting them back to school so they can learn how to overcome challenges thrown at them suddenly, adapt and overcome while simultaneously abiding by factual recommendations. Isn't that healthier than letting our kids sit at home in front of a computer, withdrawing from the life God has given them, a life full of education surrounded by their friends and teachers they love?
Your time is up. Thank you, we appreciate your comment, thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Mason Brown. I'm a senior at EHTHS. I'd like to share my story. My junior year of high school was going horrible. I had recently broken up with an ex, and I was struggling with if I should join back on the crew team since I missed it so much, and I was doing all of that with the responsibility of doing schoolwork. Then, the day before school closed for COVID, I actually for the first time heard about it. I don't watch the news because I just had people tell me what happens, the important things at least, but no one told me about COVID until the day before, and when I started hearing people say that school's going to close because of it, I didn't believe anyone. I mean, it can't be that bad, right? We were told that we'd be back in school the next month. Then two weeks later, we were told we'd be back before the school year ended. Then they finally told us that we wouldn't be going back to school till next year. Every time that we were told we were going to be later on, it made me sink into depression and more stress every time. My love for school had completely gone away. I never knew that I would not care about school, because I was always a kid that would try my best in everything. But when we were told we weren't going back, I gave up for almost a month. I did work when I felt like it, I didn't care what grade I was given. My dog, Chance, he died resting on my lap while I was doing work, busy work. I didn't get to watch my dog die because I was doing an equation for an adult. Luckily, the teen center and my parents were there to keep pushing me, because I wouldn't have gotten the grades I did if it wasn't for them that year. The summer goes by quickly with a new job that I love along with my first love for a girl. Both ended before school started. We were told that we came back to school, that everything would be back to normal. I didn't know why I believed it. Ever the time, we were lied to, so why would I believe it this time? Probably because I thought that a thing like the flu wouldn't be taken so seriously. I spent this senior year the most depressed that I've ever been in my life. So if you were to ask me if I think that you should open the school fully, I'd walk away, because I've already grown used to the torment that has brought me. I don't care if you close the school down till April, but if the school isn't open by May, my care for the school is completely gone. Why May? Because May is the month where everyone starts to relax, that school is ending, where they are with their friends, when they can finally communicate, when everything is going fine. And the least that we can do for the students who've gone through so much over this COVID is at least let them connect with their friends they haven't even seen in a year. These kids deserve the right to go to school every day. I do too. Depression lasts way longer than COVID, and let me tell you, the infection of COVID is way weaker than the infection of depression, and if not half of the students that are attending this school, it's most of them that have it.
Thank you very much. Thank you for that. We hear you. I have a senior at home as well. Schools are open. They're not open every day, not yet, not until it's safe to do so, but schools are open. But I hear you, and we hear you, and we wish the best for you. That's why we, the nine of us up here volunteer our time, is to do the very best we can for our students, for our staff, for our teachers, their families, and their loved ones at home. And we hear you, we thank you for that. Anyone else, please?
Christopher Matuson, 205 Sun Valley Circle, Ag Harbor Township. I wasn't even going to speak tonight, but Susan and Mason are really good friends of ours, and also have a daughter named Miranda, who's a senior with Mason at the high school, and we have a nine-year-old son who's in fourth grade, so I feel that if I don't speak, I'm doing them a disservice, along with my wife who is also here. I'm a huge supporter of Ag Harbor Township. I love the district, I love the teachers. My daughter's done color guard for three or four years, my son has some, some, some learning issues on an IEP, and, you know, his teachers up until now, including the ones this year, have been very generous to him and, you know, helped him in always possible. You know, I'm in the contact tracing business in my career that I hold. Schools are not open, because if the definition of being open is what we do now, I respectfully disagree with that. And I know, you know, you have a daughter in high school or a child in high school, I'm sure you can see where we're coming from when we say it is not open. I feel my daughter also has a lot of depression issues at this point. We can't even pull her out of a room with the blinds closed until noon daily. Our son, other than us both having two full-time jobs, we can't even, we can't leave the table for two minutes, because he has difficulty comprehending even a five-sentence story that's being read. We see other kids that are virtual on there that they don't have a pencil, they don't have a piece of paper, they don't have their book, they don't have a parent. We're lucky enough to be able to sit there all day, but I know the sacrifice that we've made to do that, but other kids, they're just not, they're not that lucky. You know, we talked about before, following the science and following facts, and, you know, there are plenty of other schools that are open. Granted, some of them may not be as big as this district, but where there's a will, there's a way, and I could tell, these kids are struggling. They're not just struggling, we are struggling as parents. We have full-time jobs, two full-time, actually three full-time jobs now. Our regular full-time job, our full-time job teaching, whether people believe that we are teachers at this point, we are, and then three hours worth of homework a night. So I started work at, well, actually got on there with my son at eight o'clock this morning, I haven't sat down yet tonight. We made sure that we wanted to attend the night and be able to come in and speak, so I appreciate the opportunity, but again, I do not believe, and I believe a lot of others in this room and in this community, that school is not open, so, appreciate it.
Thank you, we appreciate your comments very much, we understand. I understand where you're coming from. Again, I'll repeat, I have a senior in the high school as well, so I understand, and most of us up here have either children or grandchildren in the system as well, so we hear you, we understand. We want schools to be back to full, normal operations as soon as possible. We all want that, we all want the same things. Is there, is there anyone else here in the audience, please?
Good evening. My name is Jacqueline Evenson, 21 Hartford Drive. I'm a registered nurse here in the community. I've worked in the surgical department for the past 20 years. I am no stranger when it comes to COVID virus, as I have dealt with it on a daily basis, both in an acute care clinical setting, as well as being part of the COVID testing team that went out to all the area nursing homes. Besides being dedicated to my profession, my number one greatest responsibility is for my two children, who I love more than anything. There is not a day that goes by that I don't worry about the safety and happiness of my children. Having said that, I want you all to know that I have the greatest respect for our teachers and care about their safety and well-being as well. So the question here is, how can we open our schools so that everyone feels safe and has an educated, factual, medical science-based understanding about how we can adapt to our current situation? As many of you know, some of our local schools, such as Linwood and Ocean City, made the announcement that they are beginning to open back up. I made an inquiry regarding how they reached the decision to open and where their guidance came from, and was told they all worked in conjunction with Dr. Trevetti. Dr. Trevetti is Chair- Dr. Trevetti is chairman of infectious disease at Atlanticare and has been working with many schools and local businesses to help interpret CDC and state guidelines. With the help of his nurse practitioner, Gemma Danhale, they have been successful in interpreting and designing safe and effective plans to reopen local schools and business. I had a meeting with him today and spoke to him regarding our situation here in our district and with the many concerns for both parents and teachers. They agreed to present their presentation used for both Linwood and Ocean City to the EHT School Board if the board would have them. I think it's also worth mentioning that Dr. Trevetti is doing this free of charge as he feels it's his civil duty to help our community get back on its feet. I'm asking the board today to please take a vote agreeing to have Dr. Trevetti present his science-based presentation on how we can open our schools. Thank you. I'm hoping that we can get an answer today, whether or not you would have him come and do his presentation.
Thank you very much for your comment. I'm wondering if you're familiar with our road back.
I am.
So, I'm going to answer your question.
Okay.
So, we're not going to go back and forth, if that's okay.
Okay.
Dr. Gruccio and I will answer. So, we have a road back committee. We had stakeholders participate through the spring, through the summer. Our school physician is Dr. Petrucci, who has been advising our road back committee. We have Mrs. Semet, who is our supervisor of health and also supervises our nurses. So, our road back plan is fact-based. And you have to realize, we are a much larger district than the districts that you're speaking about.
I spoke to him about that. He said it's possible.
Well, you know, again, so I thank you for your comment.
Do you have an infectious disease doctor on your committee?
So, you've asked your question and now, so we're going to respond. So, I very much appreciate that input and I'm going to ask Dr. Gruccio to take a look.
Okay.
And
And I can provide you with the contact information.
We welcome any input that's helpful for us. Again, we're trying to move forward and get things back to normal as quickly as we can, but please understand, we have a very robust process that's been ongoing for a long, long time. And we have folks that'll come up or call in and they'll say, they will be unaware of how much work we've gone into. And I'm going to ask Dr. Gruccio to expand on that just a little bit and the fact that, you know, we have done our homework here too. We're a larger district. You can't compare apples to oranges.
He's aware of that and he said it's possible, regardless of the size.
Thank you, Mr. Castellano. As far as our road back to school committee, I'll go back to July 28th, where we had a five-hour meeting of involving stakeholders, board members, and committee members, stakeholders in the district, employees in the district, parents, and also Dr. Petrucci, who, you know, we had on there. He spoke regarding PPE. He spoke regarding transmission mitigation. And we consult with him daily regarding our contact tracing processes, any questions that arise. As I stated earlier, we have pandemic teams in each one of our schools. Those teams have met, listening to feedback with parents. Here we are, six, seven months later, and the district pandemic team will meet this Friday as we will review that data and take into consideration, you know, the feedback regarding the doctors, infectious disease doctors. I am aware of the presentation. I have it right here back. A lot of the areas that, most of the areas that were covered, were covered by Dr. Petrucci. But again, Friday, you know, this information will be shared and discussed, and we'll see what the feedback is from that pandemic response team regarding any information that they'd like to seek further.
Very good. So, let's finish public. If we have any further public comment first here, then we'll go to board member comment.
Brandon DiNaffo, 20 Clover Hill Circle, Egg Harbor Township. I was actually going to take the night off and give you guys a break, but Mr. Castellano, you've made me come up here basically by saying that you believe schools are open. The fact that we've gotten to the point where you, the chairman or the president of this board, believes that schools are quote-unquote "open" is frightening. The fact that you have cut someone off here who came in and gave her time as a parent and told her that you have a doctor involved with this, and nothing against that doctor, I don't know him, but he's a pediatrician. He's not an infectious disease specialist. So, I want everyone to understand what's going on here because you guys have been working hard since July. So, let's talk about that. So, in July, you guys were putting a plan together to bring the kids back to school. There was a board meeting on August the 3rd. The district put the plan together before that board meeting. On that same day, the road back and the checklist regarding the road back was disclosed. The checklist allowed for less than six feet if, in fact, a barrier was used that applied to both public and private schools. Our district, while our region down here was green and there weren't a lot of COVID cases, decided that we were going to keep kids all remote. So, we lost September and most of October until October 26th, when we went to hybrid. So, we lost two months of schooling when places like Margate, places like Absekin, and different districts in our community were open. We decided to close, all virtual. We go back on the 26th of October, November 22nd, Dr. Gruccio makes a discretionary decision to close schools. She admitted that was her decision. Next thing we know, we're shut down again until January 19th. We get back hybrid again. We've had time to talk about how to combine the cohorts. We've been talking about this for two months, month, and where are we? You, in fact, had a board meeting in December that said you were going to look into the Plexiglas issue. Today, almost two months later, nothing. So, you haven't addressed the public about this. You are the president of the board. And the fact that you sat here tonight and said that schools were open after what you heard, okay, from a student, a senior, who was suffering, the fact that you said schools are open is embarrassing, quite frankly. The fact that you wouldn't let a parent speak when she said that it wasn't an infectious disease expert that was giving you opinions was embarrassing, okay? So, I want to remind you that you are voted into office by the people of this community and we deserve better. The kids of this community deserve better. The kids of this community deserve to be in school. Don't give me excuses anymore. The district's too big. Tom's River is opening four days a week. They've got doubled the amount of students. So, at some point, we have to stop making excuses. At this point, I love the teachers. My wife's an educator in a school. She's been there since September. No vaccine, working in person, doing her job every day with her colleagues. We have to stop making excuses. We're putting the interests of adults before kids.
Okay. Last time I checked Your time is up at this point?
It's, yep, thank you. Good, though, another people speaking. Thanks.
Well, we're not going to go back and forth. And I did not, I did not cut anyone off. In fact, I've let everyone go over time and finish their thoughts. We've addressed the Plexiglas numerous times. And, you know, I want to thank you for your comments. I stand by my statement. Our schools are open for hybrid learning, as are over 500 districts in this state, the vast majority of districts, because that is the safest way for us to proceed right now.
Good evening. Finch Jones, 6 Linwood Court, graduate of Egg Harbor Township High School. My son's here. Both my boys are graduates at a high school. I understand your challenges because I have to live it every day with my full-time job, also an EMT. So, again, like them, we see the COVID patients. We transport the COVID patients. We see what they're going through. My daughter's a sophomore this year at the school and, you know, she's trying, I say the word "trying," trying to do the hybrid as best she can, but looking, again, what you witnessed tonight, the rate of depression, the increase in depression in these kids is staggering. And I, again, I understand. I know your road to recovery. I've read all the roads to recovery. I understand the issues with early on getting the PPE. I understand the issues early on with some of the other challenges that all districts had to face. They overcome them. We've been able to overcome some of the PPE issues. We've been able to overcome a lot of the other issues. This school district, regardless of its size, should be the leader in the rest of the county. Should be the leader. Again, as a resident here, I want to see us be the leader. I understand that there's things you still to do. We're all here because we support you and we support that. You got to let us know what it is we need to do. If it's utilizing funds for the Plexiglas, I don't think anybody in here is going to argue against that. If it's utilizing funds to do other things, additional protective measures have to be put in place, I understand that, all right? Budgets, you're getting ready to prep your budget. I don't think anybody here, me included as a taxpayer, are going to have a problem putting safety measures in place for our children, for the teachers, for the staff, for all the workers. Like I agree, the bus drivers, same thing. They're in a tube with, you know, not knowing what these kids may have when they come on. But again, they take the precaution. They take the protective measures. Tell us. Tell us what your challenges are. Tell us what it is that we need to do collectively as a district. And I'm telling you, we're going to be able to overcome them. We will support you. We will do whatever you need to do to make this happen. But again, you heard that we're, you know, excuses. It's, be a leader. That's all I ask. Please, all right? And for those that know me, be, let's be the ones in this county who get the kids back in school safely. We protect the staff. We protect everybody. Let's be on the forefront. Let's not sit back and wait what other districts are going to do or what, you know, what the governor's going to tell us to do. We can't wait. There's no way we can wait. And most of you on here, you can do, I know you can do it. With your backgrounds and your experience, you can do it. We all can do it. And again, we're here to support you. We're not here to argue or fight and, and we just, these kids have got to get back, got to get back in here. I mean, it's just, it's unbelievable what they're going through. And to see it, it's horrible. And I know, again, you have a child, anyone that's got a child, grandchild, you don't want to see them suffer like that. Again, not with this district the way it is. I mean, he's getting ready to graduate law school and has graduated this school. We're a phenomenal school district. We got to be able to do more. We have to be able to do more. And I know we can do more. So, please, we're here to help you. Ask us and we'll help you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any further comment from in-person before we go to the phone?
Hi, my name is Regina Bonjornau, 405 Starfish Lane. Dr. Gruccio did state in the beginning of this meeting during her opening comments that there's going to be some kind of meeting that's going to be going on, that we're going to try to move it up from the end of the marking period to the end of this month and, you know, share with stakeholders to come to the conclusion if we're going to get back to in-person for four days, hybrid, keep this whole thing going on this way it has been going on. I strongly encourage everyone to open their mouths and keep on pushing for four to five days of in-person, full day. Our children need full day. There has been studies that our education has been cut. They're taking things out of our curriculum so that they can get a four-hour day done on time. I mean, that's a lot for a teacher to push information into small minds at kindergarten through middle school and then even high school. They're basically teaching themselves. So, we need to get back to in-person, full-time. I wanted to know, we did talk about a couple meetings ago, the Plexiglas. We have $3 million per the budget or the auditor today. Where, why are we waiting to come up with this conclusion now? Like, we should be already purchasing it and getting it into our classroom. We know that we have classrooms that can't, the density that you had mentioned, we can't abide by six-feet distancing in any of our classrooms. It's impossible. But we can have pre-K with 20 kids running around, touching each other, and they don't know how to cover their mouths yet, but those teachers are not scared. They're not fearful for their jobs. They're going in and teaching young minds, which is great. That's awesome that our district allows that. But we also should be focusing on our seniors who are going off to college. That could be a difference of being just an average person when they did so awesome in school. That depression is going to last them a lifetime. It could spiral into a horrible thing, drug addiction, alcoholism, abusive relationships. We need to start focusing on our seniors too. We can't just worry about pre-K and kindergarten, first grade. We need to worry about all of our kids. And I do agree that, like, it is embarrassing that we are sitting here counting down the minutes of every person in here. We took our time to come out here and voice our concerns and you all just sit up there, not all of you, I'm sorry, most of you are sitting up there and being empathetic, saying we understand. We're doing the best we can. No, we're not doing the best we can because just like the gentleman before me, he said, "Tell us. What do we need to do? Do we need Plexiglas? We'll come to the table with you. We'll help you. But tell us what we need. We need to know so that we can get our schools back open." This is not open. This is, we're doing our best. We need to do better. Thank you.
Okay, we appreciate your comments. Anyone else here in the room? Doc, would you like to speak just a bit on the? It's up to you, okay? I don't know if you wanted to speak on the distancing or, it's up to you.
Nothing more than you covered. At the last meeting, I did share that we have heard just Plexiglas for, when we met with the union representation for the small group instruction areas, teachers that are moving. So, we began that process. But again, I know the stance of six-feet social distancing is, there's no substitute for that. In discussion with the county superintendent, last week in our county meeting, he emphasized again, there is no substitute for social distancing. So, that is the position that this district had took early on and, you know, it is still a recommendation. And I believe we all attempt to do that in our own lives, you know, whether we're out of store in public or in our school buildings, we work hard to do that when we're in a social setting, so.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Stacy DiNaffo, 20 Clover Hill Circle. I have a ninth and a sixth grader in the district, both of who came into the district as first graders from small, private preschools and kindergartens. So, I'll admit, I was a little nervous when they started first grade, but not only have I never had a problem in the district, but my kids have absolutely thrived here. I have always been proud of this district and what it can accomplish until now. I feel that this district, which has always been so great for my kids, is actually failing the kids in the township. In almost one year, students have had 16 days of schooling in-person at the most. Many of them have had less. So, again, I know many of us have said it, if that's our idea of open, that's not sufficient and that's not acceptable at this point. Study after study has shown that kids learn best in school. Study after study has shown that the safest place for kids with the least number of transmissions of the virus is in school. Study after study has shown that the lack of in-person schooling is significantly detrimental to children's education and mental health. So, every little bit of in-person schooling we take away from these kids affects them negatively. In almost one year, I feel that the board and the administration has done very little to show us that these things matter to them. You say we need six feet of social distancing between students, yet executive order one You say we need six feet of social distancing between students, yet Executive Order 175 and the Road Back clearly state, "Physical barriers can be used if six feet of social distancing cannot be maintained." You say that our district is too big to offer more in-person schooling. We may have more schools, but our schools' sizes are no bigger than schools in other districts. Toms River, which has almost 15,000 students in its district, is opening to four or five days. You say teachers aren't vaccinated, yet schools have been providing more in-person learning since September than we have without vaccinations. I know that for a fact, because I am an educator in this county. My colleagues and I have been in school five days a week with our students right in front of us since September, before vaccines. We don't complain, we don't think we're more important than the kids we teach, we don't think we're entitled to special treatment that every other employee in this state isn't entitled to. We follow the state regulations regarding the Road Back, we maintain safety precautions, and we go to work. We do it happily, because we're doing it for the kids. This district needs to stop making excuses and stop catering to a minority of fear. The board and the administrators need to stand up and show that they deserve the task we've entrusted to them, the task of fighting for our kids' education by returning them to more in-person schooling as soon as possible, because this has gone on long enough. Thank you.[703.79][703.79](applause)
Thank you very much for your comment. Do we have anyone else in-person before we go to our phones? Okay, we're going to go ahead and go to our telephone callers, and then we'll have board comments. I haven't forgotten you.
I'm just adjusting the volume, so that's all, thank you. I was testing to see if it's on the website, it's on the website yet. Usually I wait for it to be up for about a minute, it's still not live streaming, but we'll look at it. It's now on the website, so we'll wait about a minute if there's any callers. Any kind of touch of public comment, name and address, please? You are now live streaming, please state your name and address.
Ethel Lagreco, 118 Leo Avenue. I called about a month ago, when the speakers weren't working, and Dr. Gruccio was supposed to call me back, you know, to clarify since she got into trouble hearing me. Thank you for the call back that I never got. Second of all, Mr. Castellano making that comment that schools were open in response to a teenage boy coming in and making a comment and opening up about depression is nothing short of bullying and intimidation. You have a teenager, you claim, you know you can't talk to them the same way you should talk to an adult. You're an adult talking down to a child who just told you he has depression and suffers. That's a form of bullying. You guys spent 20 minutes talking about social media in ethics. Where are the ethics when this Board of Education president is talking down and bullying the teenager? You should be ashamed of yourself, and you should not be present.
Mrs., how can we respond to that? We're going to respond to that.
Mr. Board President, what was the name of that parent? Did anyone get that?
The parent was Stephanie Lagreco.
Thank you.
So just to follow up in response, the district is not bullying, the district is not making any actions that are not appropriate based on Road Back guidance that the district has to follow. In addition, the board is up here as volunteers, they're here doing what is in the best interest of the district, following the leadership of the district and the guidance from the Department of Education, the Road Back, the executive order, and making decisions based on input that they receive from the community, from the staff, and from the professionals. In addition, I just want to note, do you need to answer that?
We have the queuing system now, that person will be next after the one I just queued in.
In addition, part of the process at the board meetings is to discuss things, so that's why the board had a discussion about policies, that's why the board had a discussion about items tonight, when it came down to work session. This is our working meeting where we work, the next meeting is the regular meeting where we actually take action and do, and vote on the items we discussed at the work session meeting. The only item I wanted to point out is, the board does have a policy on a three-minute time limit, and that's why Mr. Castellano has been keeping people to that limit.
I'm sorry, I might be out of line here.
It's not public comment right now, so it's not the appropriate time to comment. It's not public comment right now, so I'm going to have to ask you to stop talking, or I'm going to ask the board president to call you out of order.
I'm sorry, if we could go back to those meetings. Just for the record, it was teacher convenient.
I let everyone go over time tonight. We had a large crowd, I let everyone go over time tonight. We listened to everyone.
Ready for your next caller? You are now live streaming, please state your name and address for the record.
Stevie Law, 27th Bernie Creek Drive.
Go ahead with your public comment.
I just wanted to remark on hearing the budget about the $3/5.6 million. I don't know why they can't use some of that money towards PPE slash the Plexiglas. I know the Plexiglas was spoken of sometime in December, and it seemed like at that board meeting, some of the board members were kind of indiffamé about it, like, they haven't heard of the word Plexiglas and it could be utilized. And they were going to look into it, and since then, I have not heard anything, and I've been watching all the board meetings, I have not heard anything more about the Plexiglas until tonight, since some of the parents have brought it up. Why can't we do the Plexiglas? It's a good prevention, we don't have to be six feet apart, and it's something we can keep. What if this pandemic comes back in another way? What if it is a fat-screw season? It can be utilized again, it's an expense worth putting out there. Why not Plexiglas teachers and set up every single student? The teachers could be Plexiglas and students can wear fat masks and facial. This will keep the cost down, and teachers seem to be more concerned because of higher risk. I don't understand why our district is so proud of themselves that they initiated full-day kindergarten and full-day pre-K during a pandemic. You now have four, five, six-year-olds who need close contact versus older students. These children need help keeping their masks on, tying their shoes, toiletting, maybe making accidents, how to hold a pencil, how to tie their shoes. Also, how many classrooms have been taken away from the high school students to provide a not-so-very-kidergarten classes or pre-K? Our students are increasingly becoming secondary, chronic neck and back pain, headaches, depressed, alone, possibly cheating. Some students that are A and B students are failing and decrease motivation. We need to open up E... I'm not done, thank you so much. We need to open up EHT schools now. I and many other parents want it opened now. Open EHT, four to five full live days. Combine A and B cohorts, because I hear the numbers are low. The schools are open, the lights are on, the teachers are there, the buses are running, open up EHT schools. Let us not be followers. Let us, EHT, be the leaders. Lead us to stop the fear, lead us to improve our children's rights, to be live and school and get their education. Lead us to be responsible and reliable for the sake of our children's future. We can no longer gamble with our children's social, emotional, and health or their education. Our school is big, we have a big district, but we also have many schools, and big schools, so compensate. So the apples and oranges is a basket of fruit, because we can do that. I just don't feel we're trying hard enough. I've also heard, and I don't know if this is rumor or fact, and I would like you to answer me this, I have heard that teachers are not allowed to fail students, even if they're failing. Is this true? Is this how we're going to go through EHT? Either our potential leaders, our mayors, our governors, owners of stores, possible presidencies, and you're dumbing them down? You're making them sad, they're becoming with chronic pain, you need to step it up. I'm so tired of hearing the same sentence over and over from Mr. Pete. Please, say something different, that you have a plan, and this is what it is, from A to Z, I want to hear more, I want to see more. You take my money, utilize it, please, let's open EHT schools.
Okay, I think we're well past time. Just like, there was a lot there, Dr. Gruccio, can you please speak to the Plexiglas again?
We have purchased Plexiglas, definitely it's been installed in the M.D. rooms when we, back in October, we have purchased Plexiglas. Comes out of a discussion from the union for small group instruction scenarios, teachers that are moving from classroom to classroom, in middle school to high school, and we are researching, doing more research on Plexiglas for other areas where it cannot maintain six-feet social distance.
Thank you.
As a reminder, we do have the queuing system, so you don't have to keep calling back until you get answered, you can just wait on hold once you get the message about the fact that we have a queuing system. That's what it basically says, that you'll be next in line in the order which our calls are received. Thank you. And the streaming is about a minute and a half, based on the last time I checked for this actually hit. So we'll wait. I may have to refresh my page. Forty seconds, okay. Thanks.
How are we doing this live?
So, based on our IT help here, I just got it up on the website, but I'm not sure what the people at home are seeing, so maybe they've already had it, but I just got it up, so I would like to wait another 30 seconds, if that's okay, just to make sure, to give the opportunity. They may have a slow browser like I do.
Sure.
I think that's sufficient time.
Okay. Did we have any written inquiries?
We did not have any emails this week, no.
Okay. So at this point, then, we're going to close public comment, we're going to move to board member comment, and we're going to start with Mrs. Byrd.
This might take a while.
As long as you use your microphone, we're going to be okay.
So I think tonight I was reminded of a couple things. I was reminded of why I ran for school board. I was reminded of why I love living in a covered township. And I was reminded of how unique the position of being a school member, school member is. The gentleman who said, "Tell us the challenges so we can work together to help our kids", that reminded me of why I love to live in EHT, because we're a community and we want to work together, because our goal is for all of our children to have the best education that we can have. And I'm reminded of why I became a school member, because of the passion that I see from so many of you, because I've been on that side, and so have, you know, the other volunteers up here. We ran for this position because we felt the way you have felt for various reasons. For me, it was special education, that's what sparked my wanting to do this super-fun volunteer position that we have. My own children are suffering right now. But, to the point where I have told their teachers, "I don't care if they fail everything, I want to know that they're mentally okay," because right now, my own children are not mentally okay. So what you're saying and what you're expressing, and thank you for your bravery in sharing that, it does not fall on deaf ears up here. We are not up here to hurt anyone. I have spent, and so have my colleagues, nights in tears, because we know the decisions that we've made in the last year have impacted families in ways that we never signed up for as board members when we ran, there was no pandemic, you know? This is so hard for us in this position, for us as parents, for us as citizens, it's hard for all of us. So, it may seem like you hear the same answers over and over. And I'm sorry for that, because I don't want to minimize how you feel in any way. We're not trying to minimize your feelings, or your passion, or your experiences. We're not trying to minimize your feelings, or your passion, or your experiences. Up to this point, so many people have worked so hard to do what we felt was right, based on the evidence we had in front of us. Now, I am, I would like to hear what Dr. Trevetti Casta said. I think that in my classroom, I don't use data that's seven months old. I use data from the instruction I teach that day. And I use it to inform what I teach my children tomorrow. So if we have an infectious disease doctor who is willing to volunteer their time and share whatever they have to share with us, we should take advantage of that opportunity. Because we don't know it all up here. And whatever advantage we can get from talking to people who might find a way that we haven't thought of, hey, let's do it. Because our kids are suffering despite our best efforts, despite our best efforts. Because we are trying so hard, all of us up here. We are not taking these decisions lightly. Everything your children feel, our children feel too. And we have to leave our children to come here tonight and every other week to help all of your children. We don't take this lightly. It is not easy up here, but we signed up for it. We ran for this position. We get it. But we want to work together. And if there are opportunities for us to find ways that maybe we haven't thought of, or to offer new perspectives, I believe that we should absolutely take advantage of that opportunity. And thank you for bringing that information to us as a board. Finally, maybe.
Finally.
Maybe. The Plexiglas. The Plexiglas has been brought up in the fall during curriculum, during board meetings, through emails. How much will it cost? Get us the numbers. I know we took a stand of not doing the Plexiglas because six feet is best, and that is the advice we got. However, we have seen schools successfully open with Plexiglas. And they have not had large outbreaks. So if we could put a million dollar term in at the high school during a pandemic, then why don't we have figures as a board on Plexiglas yet? Because we didn't ask for it. My own children, and this isn't about my kids, but they're the only kids I have. So that's my, that's what I'm going with. They are so sad. And they are not learning, despite their teachers, they're doing such a good job. They're really trying hard. And I'm grateful for that. But this is not education. We're doing the best we can, but we can do better. These Plexiglas things may cost us a million dollars, may cost us two million dollars. Maybe we can only use them for three months. However, I bet you anything, teachers are so creative. I bet you anything we can find new ways to use those Plexiglas. I know right now myself, I'm thinking, "Oh, my gosh, if I had a Plexiglas for my class, I'm doing centers. We're Velcro-ing things to it. Next year, I will use them." You know I'm right. Teachers are creative, and we will use anything that is at our disposal to make it work for our classrooms. We need to get our kids in school. And I get it that we're large, but one of the reasons I ran for school board is because I am so sick of hearing how large we are in Egg Harbor Township. We have the buildings. We have the staff. We have the resources. We need to get our kids back in school. We have a great community. And this has been hard. And I cannot stress enough how hard our administrators have worked and are working, and our teachers. And I know it's not to the satisfaction of everyone, because for every solution, there are seventeen problems. So they are working very, very hard. Mr. Castellano has dedicated twenty years to this district. And he has, he has been at the forefront of changing things for our district so it improves for our kids, our programs. So he may be the leader tonight, and he's taking a beating, but he's done a lot of really awesome things for your kids in this district. And you may be upset because he's the only one who really talks during comment, but he doesn't deserve to be torn down in that way. I understand you're upset, and I understand we're all frustrated and passionate. But he's served here for twenty years, and he's done a darn good job. And he deserves thanks, despite right now how you may feel. So yes, I want Plexiglas. Yes, I want our kids in school. But we also have to work together and realize that blaming and name-calling is not productive. So if we keep along the dialogue of the gentleman who restored my faith in Egg Harbor Township by saying, like, "Let's work together, let's work together. Let's use the resources that we have and come up solutions that help our children." And be patient with the people in the leadership roles, because it is not easy up here. It is not easy every day making decisions that you know may be great for one group, may hurt another group. It's not easy. But if you want to run for school or July, that's when you do it. So please feel free to run.
Do you have other board members? Mr. Iron.
Well, I don't know how I'm going to follow that up, but I do have a couple of comments. So thank you for setting the stage, Mrs. Christie-Bird. So I'm glad to hear from the students and the parents tonight. I've only been on this board since January, and I haven't seen many parents come here or students. So I really appreciate when students come up here and say their side of the story, because we hear a lot from the parents, and we hear a lot from social media and stuff like that, but we don't hear from the actual people that are impacted from that. So I appreciate that, and it takes a lot of courage to come up here and say that in front of everybody, also while the camera's staring right at you as well, for your peers to hear all that. That takes a lot of courage. So thank you very much, and hopefully other people will come out and talk. I also echo what Ms. Bird said about if we can get that doctor in here to talk to us, because data evolves, data changes, and we should hear from other people that have different sides of the stories and maybe different science that other people have. So if we can, free of charge, if we can get that Dr. Grucio, I would like to see that. With that, like I said, I've only been on this board, and as a board, we are the what, not the how. And with that said, we talked about the district pandemic response team is meeting this week to discuss different ways that we can be creative about opening four days, maybe five days, or switching the schedule around for the hybrid. I would like to see a proposed timeline for those changes after you get all the data, Dr. Grucio. If we can have something, I mentioned it in an email and stuff, but if the public can see, hey, we are, we're trying to get to this date, and these are the milestones that we need to accomplish that, I think that will help out a lot of students and a lot of parents' stress levels, and they can see that we are actively working against that. I would like to see that as the what, to see a timeline or see proposed milestones for that. That would be greatly appreciated, and I think the public would like that as well. They're shaking their heads, so people, if you are not seeing that, that's what they're doing. But thank you guys for all coming out here. This is, this is what we need. We need the discussion back and forth. We need to hear this discussion. So I appreciate it. Thank you, guys, and that is all. Mr. Castellano.
Thank you, Mr. Iron. Miss Sullivan, and then Mrs. Slach.
I appreciate, I say at almost every work meeting when we have somebody show up, our work meetings are our most important meetings, because you actually see us work through things. We listen to whoever's here, we have presentations, and then we really work through, and then we're prepared next week to make decisions. And I think this week, having all of you here has been great. Dr. Grucio has spoken that she has a meeting with the pandemic group on Friday. We're as anxious as you to hear what that, what is going to be the outcome on that. There's not a board member up here that doesn't want their kids back. And I know I keep saying that, I keep repeating it, and we are fighting for that, really fighting for that. We're putting the pressure on. We're going to see what happens, and hopefully our schools are going to be open real soon. So I thank all the parents that contributed, both here and on, through the telephone system. But just know that we really are working to get our kids back in school.
Mrs. Slach.
Well, a lot's been said, and I just don't want to repeat what everybody else has said. But we are here for the students, your kids, our kids, our grandkids. And I want to thank you all for coming and being an advocate for your kids and every other child in this district. Because right now, I think they all need it. They all need us to do the right thing.
Mr. Price.
I too want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. This is what it's all about. Communication, get the dialogue, throw the ideas around, bounce the ideas around, and come up with a solution. And I know we have been working hard to try to get back to school full-time, but it's just, it's, I don't think we're in a position where we can just open the doors and let everybody come in at one time. I think it has to be structured in a way that is responsible. Now, maybe Dr. Grucio could give a little update as far as where we're at now with the hybrid. How many days are we actually now, Dr. Grucio, with the hybrid? And what's the rate of participation? Are students that want to come into school, coming into school at once, that want to stay on hybrid? Are they continuing on hybrid? Is that where we're at now?
We offer a hybrid model where we have students in two cohorts. So they come to school cohort A comes to school Tuesday, Wednesday cohort B, Thursday, Friday. Monday, all students are virtual, and then you have an all-virtual option. So parents have the option to have their kids all virtual. Next week, next week, we're going to share the update with the attendants, so you'll get that answer next week in our public presentation. I think I answered them all.
Right. Yeah, you did. I just wanted to get clarification, because I know it changes, and things will change again, unfortunately. That's the nature of the COVID-19. Hopefully, things are changing from the veteran, I think that they are. But I think ideally, we want to get back to school. But I think the state also requires that we educate kids remotely, even if they don't want to come back to school, the schools are wide open. I think you have to do that up to a year, the last I had checked, so.
That's correct. So even if we're, if we have kids in school five days a week, you still have to give the parents an option this year for a virtual education if they choose to do so.
Right, so it's not all or nothing. We can't just say, "Well, now we're open, you come in." We still have to be flexible with that, and we don't know how many we have at that point as well. So I know there's a lot of planning and logistics that are still in place, and I think we're going to have more information now as we get closer to the next report. And I, you know, I feel your frustration. And we're here, and we want to work together with you. And you brought up some great points tonight, infectious disease expert. I think that's a great idea. And we'll take any ideas or any help that you could give us, and appreciate your time. And your research that you put into this, I know a lot of you put a lot of research into this, and I can hear when you spoke, it's coming from the heart. You have compassion, and you're not reading from a notebook. It's, you know, you have the research, and you have the data. And you can't argue with data. I mean, data is data. Data goes, it can go either way, you know, so. But again, I just wanted to say thank you, and this is something that we're going to continue to look at, so. And Dr. Grucio, I have one more question for you. It's just a little bit of a switch. But as far as the Garden State Academy, is that going to be opening tomorrow?
They open today, first day.
Oh, they started today?
They've been open virtually, but in-person opened today, yes.
Could you just give, I know you did send an email out, but could you just give us a little bit of an update on how everything went?
Yep, everything went well. Very pleased that the Garden State Academy administrators shared a video with the public and with the parents, so that they could, you know, get a little idea of what the Garden State Academy looked like. Each teacher introduced themselves to the families, so that was quite impressive. But, you know, transportation-wise, we got a report midday that things went well. And I want to give them a couple of days before I go over there and check it out myself again. And then I had promised the board, you know, once everything gets up and running, that we'll have a tour of Garden State Academy, as well as our preschool facilities.
Okay, thank you very much. And everybody have a good evening.
Any other board members? Mrs. that? Ms. Albarda, and then Ms. Gilbert Ford.
Good evening. First of all, I want to thank all of you for coming today. I was actually very excited when I saw a line of people walk in, because to me, it's depressing when there's no one here to give us feedback. You know, we are all the community. And I want to thank you so much, because as a student, I know it's so difficult to get up and talk in front of people, and you did an excellent job, and it really touched my heart. I also have a high schooler and two seventh graders. And, I mean, I've been on them, but they are doing pretty well. But I do see the challenges that they do face, more so with my high schooler than my seventh graders. And, I mean, I've done the best job I can, keeping them involved in sports and activities and whatever I can, because that is important. So I was so happy when we were talking about believing in the middle school sports, because although my middle schoolers will not play sports, I know what a great outlet it is, because my high schooler is very involved in sports. And it is great for the social, emotional well-being of them. With that being said, I'm also interested in hearing what this doctor has to say. I welcome all, everyone bringing comments in here and helping, because I've pretty much lived in Egg Harbor Township most of my life. Actually, I was really saddened today to hear about the passing of Mr. Subin. He was my seventh grade social studies teacher. I had his wife the next year in eighth grade, and my father passed away that year. And you want to know who showed up to his memorial service? That whole church was filled, but Mr. and Mrs. Subin were there. I remember them hugging me and telling me that it's going to be all right. And I think that all these excellent teachers I've had in Egg Harbor Township is the reason why I'm a teacher. And I can promise you, like, my school is still 100% virtual, but those kids know I'm there for them. I mean, I run a whole mentoring program that I do voluntarily, and put up my own money, which is another thing that I'm happy why EHT is looking into crowdfunding, because that's how I, some of my things for my mentoring program. Like, teachers have so many great ideas. But anyway, I know there's a lot of obstacles we would have to overcome to get the children back in school, more than the two days a week. I mean, I remember the high school hallways when I was in high school a billion years ago, and I can't imagine having even 60% of our children in those hallways. So, I mean, I'm not part of the "I'll do what, thank goodness", but I'm hoping that we can find a way for the students to be in school more. Honestly, I could tell you, one of my seventh graders probably will decide to go virtual. She is frightened to have more than a few kids in her class, but there's that option still. So I'm thankful for that. But I just want to thank you guys for all being here today, and, you know, hopefully we can work things out.
Mrs. Gilbert Ford. Thank you, Ms. Albarda.
I know it's been a long night, and it's been a night filled with passion, empathy, frustration, a little bit of name-calling. But anybody, anyone who knows anything about people that are in a family, families sometimes argue, families sometimes disagree, and sometimes families don't see the other person's side or how they feel about situations. And you're just like Terry, I'm from Egg Harbor Township. This is my hometown. I graduated class in ninth grade. I always say that, "That's the best class ever." But when I was a student here, the reason why I went into education, and I think about what Terry just said, the reason why I went into education is because when I was a student, I I said to myself, "The teacher's not doing it right." They could get more out of the students if they do it. If they would do this, I'm telling you, the kids would listen, and they would go for it. And that's why I became a teacher, a special ed teacher. Then when I became a teacher, I said, "The administrators, they're really not getting, they're not doing it the way they should. They can get more out of people if they do it this way." So I became an administrator, and now I'm a principal of a school. And that's not to say that I have a, that I know everything about schools. But one thing I do know is I know about children. And I have two of my own. And my son said the other day, "Mom, I don't care about anything." I said, "You don't care about anything?" And I don't care about anything, I don't care anything about school. And he said, "I don't care anything about me. I don't even care." So we're a board. We have no power unless we work together. So it's not just Mr. Castellano who's making decisions. It's not just Mr. Ireland. It's not just Ms. Sullivan. It's all of us together. And it is not an easy task. I have a daughter. She, and I'm just saying, she failed the first marking period. And I drug her through the second. So I just need for the public to know, whether they're watching online or whether you're here tonight. I heard one person say, you know, "You're on the board, and you all don't even know what it's like." Just, it was a lot of different comments. And I said, "You know what? I'm not going to take it personally because I'm the type of person, I'm going to advocate for my child too." But you need to know that everybody sitting up here, we are advocating for children. And it's just that we may agree to disagree on how we're advocating for them at this time in a global pandemic. That is the only reason why these kids are not in school five days a week. We're in a pandemic. There's a coronavirus that is killing people. And I know people say, you know, fear over, you know, fear over facts. Someone asked me the other day, they said, "How are you?" One of my teachers asked me, "Ms. Floyd, how are you doing?" And I mean, whether this is appropriate or not, I'm just going to say it. I said, "Well, listen, I have a relationship with God, and that's the only thing that is keeping me." Because it is not easy. I know it's not easy for any of you sitting out here. And it's not about us sitting up here on the board. We're parents, we're grandparents. You know, we're actually, like everyone already said, we're in this together. And you may not, may not agree, and feel like we need to do more. And I will say this. We, and I've said this before, that I wasn't 100% comfortable having schools completely open. And I won't change that because you're here. I won't change my stance on that. But I do hear you, and my children are going through a whole lot. It's tough on them. I have to leave them at home sometimes, and I have to watch them on the camera from work, on my phone, on my app on my phone. So I don't think there's anything that any of you may have experienced that we're not experiencing along with you. If we could have our schools open safely and followed all the guidelines, we'd be open. It's not just cut and dry. Because you're representing a certain amount of parents in the community, but then there's a whole nother set of parents who are on the exact opposite side. And we have to make sure that we're meeting the needs of all of our students. And I always say that, all of them, ALL, and all our families. And whether people just, you know, they said, disagree with it or not, we are here to advocate for your children. We know that they're hurting. We know that it's tough on families economically, socially, emotionally, degrades everything. But we're here to help and work together. And like I said, I wasn't going to be quiet. And I wasn't going to say anything because everybody else spoke. But I'm not going to say the same thing that everyone else said. Some things, yes. But we do have to open up safely. We do have to open up with structure. And we just need to work together. And our kids are watching us too. You know, they watch how we speak to one another. They watch how we come at each other, what have you. And I know families go back and forth, but they're watching us too. And I do know that everyone, some people put different requests about the doctor, what have you. That one, I'm not, the infectious doctor, whatever the district, whatever you all decide. But I know we have a district physician that we go with. But I'm open to hearing some solutions that could help. I don't think Plexiglas is the end-all, the be-all. I don't know that over the five days a week is the end-all, the be-all. But I do know that we want to sit here and we want to come up with the best solutions to meet the needs of all of our children. And that's really it.
Okay. Dr. Grusio, anything for you to close this out?
Yes, just a little bit. First of all, I, you'll go to me. I love passion. I respect passion. And if you know anything about people, people have passion. And, you know, the older I get, the longer I sit in the seat, you know, I embrace that passion, I embrace the persistence. And in the end, young or old, Dr. Grusio is still all about teamwork. And you ask my staff, that's how we function each and every day. So I am a proponent for teamwork. And, you know, when I hear people say, "Let's work together," that's what I want us to do. Let's work together. And, you know, this is what it's about, when we embrace, we engage, and we educate one another. So there's great ideas that people have, there's great suggestions. We've heard them through the pandemic team meetings. And I'm looking forward to Friday when the district team meets. And included in that meeting will be our school doctor. And I appreciate you bringing the information, Ms. Everson, regarding the presentation from Dr. Trevati and from Ms. Downham. I have that information. I've been reading that research. I did attend the meeting in which this was presented, so I got to hear it firsthand. So I'm reaching out to the doctors here and see if they will join us on Friday to begin with, in our pandemic meeting where we will have board representation on it. And then from there, the team, you know, will make recommendations. Mr. Ireland, I can assure you, there will be a timeline that will be released, you know, by our school district, based on the information that's gleaned at that pandemic team meeting, which I suspect that a survey would go out to include more stakeholders. So they would have their input based on some of the ideas that would be, that will come out of that meeting, you know, put in survey form, and so that we can glean feedback from all stakeholders, all parents, as we report, to get flavor. Because as Ms. Gilbert Floyd said, there are two, three sides to this whole situation that we're in. We have an audience of folks who, you know, have one viewpoint. And trust me, there's an audience of folks who have another viewpoint. And I hear, I hear each and every day, I hear all the viewpoints. And I embrace all the viewpoints, again, going back to passion, persistence. And in the end, the pride that we have for our school district and our township. And I think it's a great thing. You know, we're not sitting back. We, and I want you to know that, we work each and every day. We have conversation. And I think I made that comment today. Guys, I don't sit here with my feet on my, on the desk. We are listening, we are strategizing. And again, I look forward to Friday when we'll meet again as a whole group, looking at the feedback, and then, you know, we move forward. It is a process, but I want you all to know that we're in that process, all right? We heard, and we're listening, and we're doing. And the best part is the will to work together, okay? So you will be included. And some of you that spoke, we may be reaching out for some clarification. But again, that's all because we want to work together. Okay? Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further comment, I'm going to, it's been a long night, so I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn. I want to thank you all for coming out. We did hear you. We do hear you. We hear, as Dr. Grusio said, we hear the whole community. We hear all sides. So I'm going to, again, thank you. Everyone, please be safe, and I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn. Second. Motion and second. Eyes have you.